Okay. Hi, everybody, and welcome to the February 11th. Oops, I guess I can take this off now. Everybody, welcome to the February 11th, 2021 study session for the San Luis Coastal Unified School District. I do have an announcement and an apology to make. We just right before that we began the meeting, we found out that our translator was unable to participate with us. And we've done a frantic search and we have not yet been able to find a translator. And we apologize greatly for that. You know, I guess right now I'll ask, is there anyone who's on the call right now who needs a translator? I'm not sure how we'll be able to help, but we'll, we can try to continue to look, I think. So I really apologize greatly for that. Okay. All right. Dr. Prater, do you want to begin? We, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little discombobulated today. We're also, for those of us who are of an age, we're trying to get our, we're trying to get our vaccine appointments. So I see everybody kind of nodding their heads and hoping they'll happen. The board did meet in closed session prior to this open session. We discussed two personnel items. And that would be a review and possible action on employment dismissal or discipline of a district employee. So we did meet, no action was taken on those. We'll move now to public comment. We have two, we have two people who have submitted written public comments. Catherine, do you have those?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do you want to take that away, please?
Yes, the first one is from Shauna Devle, Devle, I believe. We now have so much data showing that schools are not spreading COVID-19. Our local YMCA school program has been able to remain open this whole school year. In addition, there's a small group in-person instruction happening at several of our local schools. How does equity play into this? If my neighbor's kindergartner is now able to go to school two days a week for an hour and a half, and my kindergartner isn't getting the same opportunity, how is that fair? All kids deserve equal access to in-person education. An educator should be supported as essential workers. Please do whatever it takes to get our kids back to school. Hoping to reopen our schools is not enough. And the second is from Amanda Bockelman. I would like to know more about the district's plan for learning recovery. Our teachers have access to vaccinations. Oh, excuse me, once teachers have access to vaccinations, will school sites reopen for in-person learning? Will students have access to high-quality summer instruction from district teachers? I feel that all students have the opportunity to attend summer school instruction if they choose. It should not be limited only to special populations and at-risk groups. Students across all demographics have struggled with online learning and deserve in-person opportunities to catch up academically and socially.
Okay, those are the two written comments we have. I'm not seeing any others. Let me do, let me do a quick check here.
No one has their hand up currently, but if someone would like to speak during public comment, please go to the participants.
And I was just checking to see if we had any more written comments. Manny, do we have any more, are you aware of?
We do not.
Okay, then let's move on to oral public comments. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
There is not.
Okay, seeing no one, then we'll move on to item number 6.01, Board Strategic Focus, Orientation, Vision, and Framing Objectives. Dr. Prater?
Yes, I would like to first acknowledge the school board for their willingness to engage in these board strategic sessions, of which there will be six in the coming months, one per month for the next six months. And I just want to acknowledge you as the school board for having the foresight and the awareness that, that there are multiple tracks, parallel tracks occurring while we are managing this distance learning COVID world. And now is the time to really roll up our sleeves and look at specific, specific areas in our organization, in our learning organization, that we need, that deserve an opportunity to, to examine and for the board to really understand it at an intimate and deep level. I was able to secure the facilitation of Adrian Harris, Becca Carcel, as well as the assistance of Josh Whiteside. Adrian and Becca are professional facilitators and they're, they are members of our school community as well. Josh represents LaZona Smith. And having a legal framework is critical for the board to better understand what elements of this COVID timeframe where we've been in distance learning for the last year and how that might impact the school district moving forward. So this is our team. And let me just lay out a framework, if I could, for you, that we are going to start today in these two-hour strategic sessions. And we will continue with them. And Becca and Adrian will lay out the roadmap for you to see that. But for my purposes today, as this introduction, what I want to say is that we have the strategic sessions of the board, which will really give you an opportunity to see our program as it is today, as we believe it is today. We are going to also bring the board along so that you better understand what our LCAP process looks like, how we utilize input in engaging our community to better support the, the needs of our most vulnerable learners. And we've also adopted back in November, the Learning Recovery Plan. And that Learning Recovery Plan is an important component to better understanding what we anticipate the needs of students to look like based on grade spans across the district. As we begin to reopen our schools, which will happen very likely in the coming weeks and months, not just in our district, but across the state and country, we need to get in front of this narrative. We need to get in front of a strategic view of reopening and what the post-COVID, post-distance learning world will likely involve. And whether it's extended school year, whether it's summer learning program opportunities, whether it's learning pods, which you'll hear about today as well, lots of really creative and great things coming forward to you. And my objective with these learning strategic sessions are for the board to put their hands on the rudder of the ship and, and make sure that you are, are getting what you expect to get from our school district and as the leaders of this district. So for that, I would like to hand this off to, to Adrian Harris to explain next steps. Adrian?
Thanks, Eric. Good morning, nice to meet you all on Zoom. Becca and I look forward to working with you all over the next six sessions to talk about strategic direction for the district and the immediate and long-term actions needed. While this is a stressful, busy time to be taking a pause for reflection, it is also an opportune time to consider what the future is going to look like. Because as Eric mentioned, our current reality and the post-COVID world are going to look dramatically different than the past has. So I want to take just a really brief second to introduce Becca and myself as your facilitator. So Becca can give a little wave. Becca has been working with the district over the last few years on several projects, and she's worked in education for 20 years. She has also worked with nonprofits and government agencies and social services and mental health. Her work includes grant writing, facilitation, project evaluation, and program administration. And she's based in Los Osos and has two grown children. My name's Adrian Harris, and the first time I worked with the district was in 2020. And I've worked with government and nonprofit organizations for 20 years at the national, regional, and local level. Much of the work that I've done has been with collaborations between public and private sector. And I've served both as a face of the organization and the behind-the-scenes staff. And now I consult with all kinds of programs. And one of the things I do is help boards develop their strategic direction with simple approaches. So our role through the next six sessions is to help guide you in decision-making as a group on what you want the future to look like. We are here to serve as an objective third party to help you analyze information and determine your path. Now, full disclosure, I am a parent of a kindergartner in the district, but I'm not here as a parent, I'm here as your facilitator. And, but it, you know, it does bring me great satisfaction to know that I'm going to be on this journey with you, helping you craft what your vision is going to be like for the next decade, knowing that my family is also going to be there right along with you. I want to thank you all for your commitment to the children in our district, as well as your commitment to working together to solidify your vision. And our commitment to you is that we are going to try and make this process as simple and painless as possible. So our goals for the next six sessions are up on your screen. And our first goal is to solidify a vision and core principles to guide the San Luis Coastal School Board and its decision-making for the next decade. And along the way, we're also going to be relooking at your mission statement. And the second goal is to develop a roadmap of short-term and long-term structural changes to meet student needs. You know, as Eric discussed, you're right in the midst of some big changes that need to happen. And so we're not just going to think big-picture guiding principles. At the same time, we're going to be talking about what are some concrete actions that you can be taking in the near term in particular to help with what we've seen as the impacts of coronavirus. So why do this, why do this now? So you already have this need to assess your organization amid the crisis of the COVID pandemic. And you already have the need to assess what students and staff need to not just survive, but thrive post-pandemic. It's been about, you know, over 10 years since you had a last strategic initiatives session. At least that was my understanding from talking to staff. And, you know, obviously, much has changed since then. And it's time to set your eyes on the next 10 years. You faced some tough decisions over the last year, and you're going to face more probably in 2021, 2022, school year and beyond. Your vision and core principles will provide parameters for decision-making. You can use them as your compass as you navigate more new territory and sticky policymaking situations. They help you know what to adopt and what not to. So the process that we've put together for you, given that we are in a Zoom platform, we can't come and meet in person for, you know, an all-day session. We've divided things up into six chunks that are a little bit shorter. And again, I mentioned, because you have this immediate need for course correction, as, as well as looking at longer-term needs, we're kind of talk about them simultaneously. And actually, Kim, would you mind going back really quick to that first slide? So you'll see here that we've divided the six sessions. We, we kind of took the cohort approach that the Common Ground Task Force, because Common Ground Task Force has also been using in creating recommendations for you. Because we felt like it would be a good manageable, it would lend itself to manageable chunks of conversation. So each session, we're going to explore student needs and specific instruction and programming to support that particular cohort. So you'll see the next session will be preschool to third, then we'll have upper elementary, middle school, high. We'll also have time to talk about that higher-level vision and core principles. And we're going to do that after we've had some targeted conversations about cohorts. All of this work will also include some work between sessions. So we'll be asking you, the board, to do research by reading the agenda packets we'll be sending to you each time in advance and taking some time to do some reflection by answering surveys from Becca and I and having targeted conversations with us one-on-one between sessions. So that when we come to have our two-hour chunk, she and I can report back to you what we've heard, were your ideas, and we can spend the majority of that time in discussion. So, okay, now, Kim, you can go to the next slide, thank you. So to give you a visual depiction of what we're talking about, this is a little bit busy, but basically, your core principles are the overarching principles along with your vision that are going to guide you in your decision-making. But we're also going to be talking about actions needed at this cohort level. So you'll see these different color-coded circles are the different cohorts. And we'll be looking at the student, at the classroom, at school-wide and district-wide for each in our meetings. And so we'll try and take a holistic look at each cohort and talk about actions needed to address academic, social, emotional learning, wellness, and life skill needs for these different cohorts. We might also be looking at important community considerations that are involved in this cohort. So just for an example, for preschool through third, we might be talking a little bit about childcare. So our outcome, so you'll see here too, obviously, we're not doing this in a vacuum. You're getting input from all these advisory councils that you have in the district. And you're going to be feeding into current planning efforts. But in the future, once you've had this created, it's going to help guide you in your future planning efforts and give direction to the organization and their committees going forward. So our outcome from these sessions is to have a short guiding document outlining your vision and core principles, and then to have this roadmap of goals or priority actions that will in turn be used by your cabinet, staff, and others to create operational plans and for education program refinement and for the, for action plans that Josh is going to talk to you a little bit about at the end of our session. So unless anyone has any questions about the process, I'm going to turn things over to staff to give you, what we wanted to give you is just a holistic view of what their current needs are that they're seeing right now to start off. Great, take it away, Kim.
Kim, whoever's going to be talking next, I think it would be best if, I know the board will probably have questions as we go along. So I think if, if you guys could kind of keep an eye on that and then call on the board members yourselves as you see the board members wanting to ask questions and things like that, I think that would probably be better than me doing that at this point, okay?
You bet. Sometimes when I'm presenting, I only see some, so if someone else sees a question or hand go up, let me know.
And Mandy, if you see hands go up, could you please identify that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll need to, at some point, if there, if there are members of the public that would like to address the board on this item, we'll have to figure out a place for that as well, okay?
Great, sounds good. So let me get us started today. And the agenda of the items we'll be going over is we'll look at just some general data before COVID, to think of just from a baseline. And then our current state of learning, and some of that you've seen at the, at recent board meetings. The impacts we're seeing from COVID-19 and our closures and the anticipated student need as we're looking forward. We'll look at our revised Learning Recovery Plan and then the three-year LCAP kind of big ideas. And then Josh will go over related board policies and legal parameters that are kind of an overview and things for you to consider. So here on the right side, if you're like me and kind of want to know the Cliff Notes version and kind of the summary, the high level, where are we going with this? Think about these bullets here on the right. And you're going to see, and I know that you know this, is that we're, you know, the highest performing district in our area. And even when you look outside of the district, we're higher performing than districts that have similar demographics. And when we look at our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, even our socioeconomically disadvantaged students often outperform the total, the general students from other districts. So in many ways, we're, you know, there's great things that are happening here. However, the third bullet is the part that we really have to continue to have our eyes on. We have an achievement gap within our district that exists between groups. When you compare the not socioeconomically disadvantaged to those that are, so those in poverty versus those not in poverty, we have an achievement gap that must be addressed. In distance learning, we've had some scattered progress, right? There is some progress being made, some scattered progress. And, and there is some, you know, progress made while we're in distance learning. However, when we look at it overall, there is a negative impact to achievement. Some of the gaps that we already knew existed are exaggerated in the situation that we're in. And as we all know, the social-emotional impacts for adults and for kids are something that we need to really be aware of. So let me add some details to that, and then I will hand it over to Rick and Laura as well. So before COVID, like I was saying, you can see here, the state of California, when you're looking at English Language Arts, has about 51% of the students that are meeting the standard. When you look within our county, English Language Arts is at 57. We're leading the county at 70% of our students meeting the standard where they should be for English Language Arts. Are we satisfied with that result? Of course not. We always want to keep improving that, but we should also be proud of the overall data that we have. When you look at math, it's even more exaggerated. The state's at 40%, our county at 45, and yet we're at 64. So something to really be proud of there as far as students that are meeting or exceeding the standards for English and math. Yeah, great, I'm going to hand it over to Rick.
Thank you. So, you know, as Kim mentioned, you know, obviously, COVID has had an enormous impact on our students. You know, we know that, that students are learning, of course. They're just not progressing as fast as they normally would in an in-person setting with the inability to provide some interventions and, and hands-on learning. We know that our English learners and our socioeconomically disadvantaged students are more impacted by distance learning than other students. And, you know, that, that is anecdotal through, you know, communication with teachers and administrators at this point in time. We do have some data that showing us, especially the DNF rate, that this is the case. And, you know, these are the students that we've targeted with pods, which Laura Storm will present a little bit later on to get these students back in person so that we can, you know, have that face-to-face communication and teaching. We've seen a drastic increase in DNF rates, especially for our subgroups. And, you know, this is alarming for a lot of reasons. You know, students can quickly get derailed in a four-year second, you know, high school education by a couple of, you know, Fs or Ds that would prohibit them from being A to G compliant. And we're working with sites now to make sure that we have, you know, remedies in place to assist students to recover these grades. And, you know, there are many different methods which we will and can discuss with you. We're also especially concerned about early literacy. The teaching of reading is a critical thing. And our kindergarten and first-grade students, our kindergarten students this year, in many cases, we've never met before. And so to have that relationship be entirely via Zoom is problematic. Mr. Unger?
So, Rick, one of the things that you showed us at the last board meeting was the rate of DNFs pre and post-virtual learning COVID. One of the things that was concerning me was just the high numbers of DNFs pre-COVID. Are we going to be addressing that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think, I think there's been a lot of, like, silver linings to distance learning. It's really interesting. I met with a group of teachers this morning talking about reopening, group of elementary teachers. And many of them commented that they've never had better communication with parents and families about progress of kids because oftentimes the parents are right there in the background as they're, as they're speaking with the kids. So we're learning from this time about ways that we can improve our communication and seeing how powerful those things are to affect things like DNF rates. As I mentioned, with early literacy, you know, our first graders went into distance learning when they were in the spring of their kindergarten year. And that is a time of their learning where they normally would make a lot of progress and really kind of bring all the instruction that occurred in the first part of the year together. And that was interrupted, you know, severely, I would say, by the spring, you know, COVID and distance learning that we had in place at that time. So we're concerned about that group. It's very challenging to accurately assess students in a distance learning environment. Teachers, as you know, are amazing at their creativity and ways that they have, you know, learned to assess students and how they work with students. But it's just simply not the same as being back in person. And so one of the challenges that we have ahead is getting kids back and assessing where they are so we know what the next steps are for delivering instruction and recovering what learning they have lost. And then, you know, we need to collaborate and communication about other soft skills that are not being developed in practice at the typical pace. And an example, I mean, fine and gross motor skills, we know, have been affected by students being at home and not being in an engaged environment at school and receiving regular physical education instruction. So next slide, please, Kim. So you, you mentioned this, Mr. Unger, you know, this is the first-grade benchmark assessment system, reading assessment for trimester one, comparing 1920, which would be pre-COVID, of course, with 2021, which is in distance learning. And as you can see, the number of students below the benchmark of where we would want them to be in terms of reading, you know, is quite a bit higher this year. Our number of students proficient and advanced, or proficient anyway, lower. It's interesting to note that the number of advanced students, you know, is also lower as well. Next slide. And then these are the DNF rates that you referred to, Mr. Unger. We just pulled, you know, one slide from our presentation to the board at the last board meeting just to demonstrate the, the point that we're trying to make.
Mr. Mayfield? Mr. Buckman had a question.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. On both these slides, we'll be able to go back and, and recover data based on subgroups as well?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So these, these are ninth through 12th grade. And we also included information on our English learner subgroup, our socioeconomically disadvantaged subgroup. And then all those students who are not socioeconomically disadvantaged and how even within that group, there's been a jump of DNF rates there. And sites have talked frequently about, you know, students who are doing fine before distance learning, who, you know, who have seen an increase in DNF rates. So, you know, as we've shared, some students are doing well, some students are doing okay, and many students are not progressing academically. And we need to address those things through, you know, immediate steps and actions, which Laura will share a little bit of now, but also in terms of long-term thinking. You know, this will need to be a priority for probably all of the next three-year LCAP cycle. So, you know, we're starting now to develop a three-year LCAP cycle that will take us through 23, 24 school years. Laura?
So, looking at academic impacts, Mr. Mayfield kind of touched on a lot of these, but we know students are progressing. Oh, I see Mrs. Green.
So, so I, I'm going to ask, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, is, is, have the, are the data points that we are using and have been using historically, are they relevant? And will they drive our district further than the current data points we're, we're, we're using? And I, so I guess what, you know, we, when we're looking at, you know, the SED and non-SED groups and our EL groups, you know, when I, when I have been looking at the data for our district, the, the largest and most glaring gap between our, our students who are doing well or not is, is parent education, which is the cohort that is which is the cohort that is, we know, before they enter school and as they go across. So I'm wondering if at some point that that can be, or where would the what is the, I guess, what are the problems of looking at the data? What is the why would we not look at that particular data? Because that particular data could then be disaggregated into our, you know, EL and our you know, other subgroups, because the state keeps changing, you know, what is, you know, SED versus non-SED homeless and which really changes, you know, how we look. And what I worry about is that when we continually focus on subgroups that we've come up with kind of isolated kind of initiatives and and programs where I guess what I'm looking for is an overarching data point that we can look at that remains consistent from the time we see kids from the very beginning before they enter school till they exit that that we can then disaggregate. And this, we have that data currently. So I guess, I guess that's what I'm asking for is that. Does that make sense, Dr. Prater?
Yeah, Mrs. Frame, could I interject? This is a an exact, an excellent example of why we need strategic sessions. So what you're really saying is, let's come up with, and you're not the only board member who has mentioned this to me, is come up with a a data profile for that is consistent, that we utilize, that informs us as to where the real gaps are that will allow us to then fine-tune our intervention. So what I what I believe could be an immediate and certainly a long-term objective is to define our data profiles where we look at equity, we look at we look at subgroups within subgroups. And there are ways to do it that are really sophisticated. And now that we have we have Ares, which is our new data system, student data system, they have something called Ares Analytics. And we're just now beginning. I've been talking to Ms. McGrath and Mr. Mayfield and Mr. Pinkerton about this very thing that we can create customized data profile sets for for us to really dive in and under better understand what it is we're looking at within our student body to help us help guide our strategic focus each year. And so I I'm with you. And I think coming out of this, coming out of these sessions will be that sort of input. And and I see, and I acknowledge that. So so I just want to acknowledge what you're saying. And that can come out of these sessions.
The only thing I would add to that would be that there's not an infinite amount, but there is an enormous amount of data that's collected across the district. And it would be impossible really to share all of that data with at board meetings. I mean, we would take hours and hours every session to share all the data that's collected. Sites do a great job of honing in on exactly what you're talking about, Mrs. Frame, which is within the within the group of SED students, you know, what is what is the differentiation? You know, and what students are really underperforming and, you know, what students are not? And what what are the key factors there? And then, you know, that helps with our decisions about, you know, what in or who gets intervention? And, you know, how are those interventions constructed and and that type of thing? So it is problematic when you report overall district data for a subgroup because within that subgroup, there are many different, you know, nuances and needs.
You know, it it seems to me one of the sort of one of the things that we should be thinking about as we're talking about data is what data is it that the board needs in order to make the decisions that we have to be making on sort of a more macro level? Right? Because we're we're looking at policy throughout the district. So what's important data for us to know? And then we're sort of also saying, what's important data for the community to know? Because we're going to be making decisions based on that data. The community needs to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. Does that make sense? So I I think that's something else I'd like to keep in mind, too.
And and I'd like to bring to the board over the next month or so examples of what what it could look like. And then get your feedback on that. Okay. Laura, can you keep going?
Yep. Okay. So we talked about that students are making progress. It's just generally not the same rate as it would be in person. And you've already heard about our achievement gap widening and seen the evidence of that. And we're very concerned about early literacy. Mr. Mayfield mentioned our current first graders being a a large concern. And then the delay of the gross and the fine motor skills, especially in the youngest learners. They haven't had the opportunity to do the writing and the and the clay and the beads and all the things that develop that. And then I just come back to we really truly won't know until the students are back. We can take our best hunches. But again, it's challenging to assess and distance learning accurately. You know, I think we'll get some surprises. Hopefully pleasant surprises when they when they return. But, you know, it it's like that gross and fine motor skills. We didn't know that until we had some some students back at school sites to see it in in real life. So I think that's going to be key. You want to go to the next slide, Kim? So SEL and other impacts. We know teamwork and social skills are impacted. Our students haven't been interacting with each other in the same ways. We also know that they're going to need to relearn, or in the case of some of our youngest students learn just how to be part of a classroom and have pride in school and be connected. Those learning to learn skills for our youngest kindergartners, kindergarten, kindergarten is a lot of learning to learn skills. Those are going to be impacted. And I think our older students may need reteaching and support in this way. We may be facing some trauma related to the pandemic in students and staff. And then some, you know, other things that maybe aren't, you know, we think of impacts as negative, but on a positive note, we are all so much more technology literate than we were before this started. And we have another kind of interesting issue in that some families have left our district for homeschool and private schools. And we don't know their needs. We don't know their progress. We we don't know anything about what's been happening during that time. So that will be an interesting thing, too, when they return. On a on a bright note, students do feel like they can reach out to their teacher for help. And you saw that in the Youth True Survey that they feel very connected to teachers right now. And we need to keep in mind that teachers and staff are going to need rejuvenation and recovery time. They they are tired and they express that. Kim, you want to go to the next slide? So anticipated student needs. These are, you know, right now, what we assume. So we have closing academic gaps across all levels. SEL across all levels. In elementary, we have that early literacy and those phonics gaps. Learning to learn behaviors, gross and fine motor, friendships and play. And you know, friendships and play in elementary school, it just translates up into middle school as like friendship and social opportunities. You know, our middle school students haven't gotten things like dances. And then executive functioning, credit recovery, hands-on opportunities, reconnecting to school and just really thinking about what is it that we can do to get students re-engaged, re-motivated and excited to be back? So and on that note, just kind of a thing to to consider is I'm starting to do forums, which with grade levels or grade span teachers. So I'm doing kindergarten, first grade, second and third, where I'm asking them, what do you see are going to, you know, are the needs? And then what do you think we should do? They are the closest to the information. And I want to get their input. So we will bring that to you in the strategic sessions. As far as high-quality interventions, these are the things we currently have in place. I think this is going to be something that we need to also look at developing more of. Level literacy intervention, FastBridge, the different counseling and family advocate pieces, the small group instruction during distance learning, what's that going to shift to when we're back in person? So we have some things in place. I think we could make this more targeted and more robust. Kim, you want to hit? Next, thanks. So learning recovery plan. You'll remember the core elements, academic recovery, social emotional recovery, identifying needs, and then, of course, childcare. And this plan has to be flexible because, like I said, we aren't truly going to know until we're able to see it firsthand. But we can get a sense, and we're already starting to do this work, especially with the pods at the high school level for credit recovery and Ds and Fs and things like that. So it's it's a moving target. It's a great framework, and we'll look at summer opportunities and and things like that. So I think we're back to Kim.
Yeah, I did have one thing.
Oh, yes, Mrs. Frame.
Yeah, I'm wondering when we're looking at the SEL and I don't really want to say the word intervention, but a lens to look at for all of our students is you know, for we've we've been unable to really have robust visual and performing arts, you know, at elementary. Just, you know, just and and cutbacks and things like that. So I'm wondering if if a piece at some point we can look at that, you know, what the emotional enrichment happens for kids when they're involved in a, you know, a potential K through six music program or that, you know, visual performing arts that really enriches kids and then leads into the middle school choice opportunities and things like that because you know, so many of our teachers and our the focus, of course, we're doing the the academic recovery, and then there's the counseling part. But I'm also wondering if we can kind of go big and look at a little bit, you know, lens of providing those experience for students who that may may not be a counseling route, but it may also be that, you know, music class or that art class or things like that that doesn't necessarily happen after school, but within the school day. I'm just throwing that out there as we're going.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's an important component of connectedness to school. I think about students that are most connected, and they're often the ones that are involved in something like that, right? And so looking at who do we need and being intentional about which students are are not in any sort of clubs or music programs or anything and doing some targeted outreach to get them involved, I think is is key. So that's definitely a component of SEL.
Helen has her hand up as well.
Thank you, Mandy. Laura, I see that that you've identified areas that that we'll be taking a look at. And I'm curious, I'll be curious to know, we've identified what we need to look at, and at some point, and I'll be curious about how we'll be looking at some of those. And I know that some of that may be difficult to assess our kids until they are back in front of us. And it will just be for information only. I mean, I know it's not, we don't get down to that level as trustees. But I will be curious to know just what assessment tools and kind of how that will be done to best figure out where where our kids are. So it's just something I'm curious about in the future.
I think in future sessions, when we break down by grade level span, we can cover that, like what it looks like at the K three span, what it looks like at the four-six span. And that would be good information for us to share with you at that time.
Thank you.
And and Laura and staff, I'm going to ask, maybe try and wrap up at fifteen minutes so we have enough time for discussion?
Yeah, you can all wrap up here and then hand it over to Josh. And so, you know, just to refresh your memory, we went over this the last board meeting is to keep in mind that we're gathering input and formulating those ideas of our new upcoming three-year LCAP. So keep in mind that this is what are we doing above and beyond for those students that are socio-economically disadvantaged, EL, foster homeless youth? So we have a base program that impacts everyone, and then the funds through LCAP. What are we doing above and beyond? About four and a half million that we're required to do, we tend to spend around seven. So we have three focus areas when it comes to our LCAP, thinking about, first of all, academic achievement instruction. Second one is what do we do for interventions and a system of support? And then the third one is that culture of care, caring about the whole student. So some of the big rocks, of course, there's lots of details within LCAP that we, you know, didn't go into here, but just some of the big components to think about are strengthening and being really strategic about our instructional strategies, right? The biggest impact we can have is great first instruction. Then it's what do you put top of that, knowing that even with great first instruction, some students will still struggle? So, you know, when you think about that pyramid, right, that triangle we've showed, you have a strong base. But then knowing that you need additional supports beyond that academic and social emotional.
Brad, Mark has his hand up. Please.
So we're running, it feels like we're running a some parallel to the LCAP. So as we perceive it, will we will we foresee impact on
I'm sorry, Mark, I I you're sounding a little garbled to me. I don't know. Did anyone hear that better? It's hard for me to, it sounds, it's kind of muted.
I think I think what Mark was asking was, will we be using this information to help us build the LCAP? Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, the stuff that we're working on now as the strategic planning and we're working in LCAP, it seems like a parallel work. At some point where they intersect, we can, we can know what the board can do.
Right. I hear kind of how will the information intersect? And I think you're right on, Mark. It's going to be our complicated thinking, but important work that we have the strategic sessions, the learning recovery plan and the LCAP align. And so it is thinking about, we get input from lots of different directions. And how do we keep all three of those components moving in a unified fashion? Did that did that help? I think I was catching part of it, but I hope that was answered.
I just want to, I just want to ensure that so as we will only be able to do it successfully, we'll be fine for for what the board comes up with to be included in the LCAP.
So I I'm just going to jump in here too, Mark. So on our very complicated graphic I showed you earlier, there was kind of a line coming down and a line going up. And the idea in theory is that, yes, the the LCAP and the MTSS and all these other plans and documents are being produced kind of in at the same time over the spring as you're doing these sessions. And and our goal is to make sure that this feedback is feeding into that. And that feedback of where they're at in developing those plans is helping inform you in these conversations as well.
And so the the other big piece is equity, obviously, you know, not doing the same for everyone, but how are we changing and addressing individual needs? Our summer experience, so it's been a great focus of Dr. Prater's of what can we do to make utilize that summertime well to make our summer experience fantastic for this summer? Obviously, there's big needs, but an ongoing focus there. I innovate that you've heard about these next two are our, you know, kind of collaborative efforts with the foundation of I innovate really providing those hands-on, you know, really just exciting opportunities for kids using the innovation labs and influencing classroom instruction as well to give to give kids real opportunities, um, in, um, in a format that excites them and makes them just itching to be a part of it. As well as the opportunities task force, um, is kind of getting focused towards the idea kind of a student advocates. So, um, you know, as we have family advocates, the opportunity task force looks at and knowing that there's barriers and knowing that students in poverty have, um, extra obstacles to overcome. What can we do to help remove those barriers? So those two big projects, um, are things that we work in collaboration with the foundation with. A really exciting work there. And, um, as well as inclusion and co-teaching through student services and how can we make sure that we're addressing special education needs? So those are some of the big rocks right now, obviously not everything, um, and we're still gathering input to help influence LCAP. So I'll hand it over to Josh next.
Thanks, Kim. So, uh, the legal parameters, some street strategic planning, um, there's not a lot, uh, that is in the ed code that deals with this. Um, however, the education code does sort of set a very broad, uh, base of directives for school districts and it really revolves around three ideas, uh, a board's philosophy, their goals and objectives. So the education code talks about that, the school district's philosophy should be a composite statement of the relationship, uh, relationship between students and the community's beliefs, concepts and attitudes. So what the community's, uh, beliefs, attitudes and concepts are will help inform how the students are interacted with, how that, um, uh, these different programs are created. And it talks about that the goals of the district really are sort of timeless goals. They are general in nature with broad direction or intent. Their overarching goals for the district forever and, and beyond. Uh, whereas objectives are those that are timed and they are specific accomplishments that have, that advance one of those goals in line with the philosophy. So that's the structure that the education code gives and they give a broad latitude to districts to address that through a variety of different ways. That could be through the LCAP, that could be through, uh, other policies that it passes, other actions that it takes. There's not really a one size fits all sort of way to meet these requirements under the education code. And so we look to the board bylaws and the board policies that the district has in place, which specifically address how this should be done, or at least how the board has in the past, uh, directed the district to, uh, adhere to, uh, the call to action to establish philosophy goals and objectives. And what the board policies say, um, is that, uh, this is through, um, that the superintendent has a duty to recommend an appropriate process to review that philosophy goals and objectives and communicate a revised or reaffirmed vision to staff and the community with regular reports on the pro-, on the process. So that duty, um, is something that, you know, maybe has been done in other ways over the, say, the last two decades. Not through a specific strategic planning process, but with the amount of interaction and communication that the board has had with the community, uh, updating policies, all of that has essentially allowed for the district to meet that marker. And so the superintendent can recommend the strategic planning process that fits within the contours of your board policy, Chris.
Josh, so I have a question. One thing that, that I've noticed, um, is we don't really have protocols for how we, uh, implement our board policies and our board bylaws. Do you think that's something that would be helpful for us to work on?
I think so. I know, I know that you guys have like a subcommittee, I believe, right, that evaluates.
We have a subcommittee that evaluates our policies, but, uh, you know, un- unlike the, the other board policies, we don't have administrative regulations, which, you know, which operationalize our own internal board, um, bylaws and policies. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, thinking, would it be helpful for us to have some of those based on what you've said, because it seems like it's important that we, that we have these protocols in line?
Yes, I think that's fine. I think that can work. Um, and if it's something that, um, is, is, if it's going to be a limited time fashion, um, then there's some different rules on how the board can put that together. Whereas if it's a standing committee, um, that is looking at the board bylaws, then that i- is very reasonable and that would be open to public. To be able to review that and, uh, and to see that process in action. So with that level of transparency, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
And so the, uh, the other, uh, boy, now where this is located is essentially in, uh, the board policies and board bylaws that you maybe never really look at because they're so basic and they're very broad and they're very, uh, sort of over esoteric and conclusory. Um, and, uh, their board policy zero, 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 zero. It's literally the first board policy that's there. Um, and no one really ever looks at it, but it's actually your vision board policy. And it talks about the, the stat, like the direction that the board has to set for the community and we always look at other things like the LCAP policy or, um, maybe the non-discrimination policy or the uniform complaint procedures or student discipline pros-, policies. But the fundamental building blocks, the foundation for the district and what it has to do are right there at the very front of your board policies. And they're the very first, uh, board bylaws that you have, both board bylaw nine thousand and now nine thousand and five talk about what the board has told itself to govern by. And that includes that the board is saying that they must be knowledgeable about district programs and efforts. They have to develop goals and identify strategies to achieve those goals with input and review from key stakeholders. And the board, and this is an interesting one, in the bylaws, it says the board has a duty to assume collective responsibility for building unity within the district, creating a positive organizational culture and communicating a common vision. So again, it's very broad, it's very, um, you know, heartwarming, right, to hear that, those types of statements, but what does that really mean? What does that look like in practice? How is that actually actualized? Um, I think those are important things that as we go through the strategic planning process, the board keeps in mind as to how we can accomplish that, um, as the philosophy and, and goals for the district. So I, can I jump ahead to action plans just real quick, Adrian?
Uh, Josh, I was going to have you do it at the end. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Cool. And, uh, we don't necessarily need to share these slides because we're going to talk about them after discussion. Kim, if you want to close the slide for a little while. Thank you. Does anybody have any final questions for staff about, uh, or Josh for the legal pieces, uh, before we jump in to some conversation? Okay. So the way we're going to be doing these sessions, we'll always have time for discussion. And probably Becca and I, in future meetings, will also report out to you what we heard individually from you before we have that discussion. This first session is a little bit different. We, uh, talked at you a little bit more because we wanted to give you this background knowledge about what we're seeing as current state. Um, but I promise we'll have more discussion time in the future. Uh, so right now we wanted to have, uh, you start the conversation about what are the immediate short-term actions the board is starting to feel like are priorities, given what you've already heard from staff. And I'll just say from the get-go that we absolutely will have time in each one of these sessions to talk about this again when we're focused on specific grades spans or cohorts. But to start things off, we wanted to hear from you at this point. Given what you know, what are the top three critical actions you would implement to support students in the near term? And in the 2021, 2022 school year, assuming a return to in-person learning. And so we don't have a ton of time today, but I was thinking at least, you know, any board member who wishes to, to have some input, uh, you know, have about five minutes each to speak on this. Um, after we talk about this, we'll talk about next steps and what you'd like to see in your information packets going forward and, and action plans and all those things. But wanted to take a little bit of time to talk about this one particular question to tee off our conversation. And again, that question is, at this point, given what you know, what are the top three critical actions you would implement to support students in the near term and in the 2021, 2020 school year? Assuming that we'll be returning for in-person learning in the near future. Oh, and Beck's going to take notes for us. I, I see Eve would like to speak and then Catherine.
I would like to address that when they come back, there's that social emotional adjustment. There's a lot of fear regarding that they, the children may have heard regarding what they could pick up at school, could be dangerous. Uh, you could bring it home to grandma, those kind of fears and things. I would love to see that allayed and mitigated those fears so that we, you know, uh, are not having people that are acting as masked police, which we're encountering at the grocery store sometimes. Um, I know my daughter-in-law, her mask slipped down a little and some stranger came up and said, put that over your nose, you know? So to have, um, a real adjustment with the caring level of, uh, the, the well-being. And that includes that they're not operating under fear as they try to learn because they're, that will impede their learning.
So having, you know, having a, a really intentional way that they're going to convey the safety guidelines to students as they come back and, and having space in the classroom to talk about the issues that we're facing as a community right now. If I would paraphrase what you're saying, Eve.
Right, and we are facing, there's a, a couple of ways we could go. We could be really positive and some would say that's not realistic because of this, that and the other. Or we could be negative and others would say, well, that's not realistic either because there's a lot of things good that are good. So to have a, maybe a common way of speaking towards what our hope and plans and future is in the school. The great success that is our, our overall goal, that student success, that we know that they're going to be able to adapt. And just really promoting that positive atmosphere of, you know, not planting too many seeds of fear. Yes, some fear is realistic, but you know how it, you can, it can get run away with. So the counseling, the social, the social emotional counseling would be a top priority.
Social motion. Thank you. Catherine.
Uh, yes.
Do you want to grab social emotional counseling on the notes too, please, Becca? Yes, Catherine.
Uh, thank you. Um, so, uh, the, the, there were few that, that left out of me and some that, especially when you reminded us that, uh, we have expressed that we have a collective responsibility for bringing staff and students together. Um, I, my mind, before you had said that, had already gone to, how do we, um, help the parents? And so we need to, um, think about that. And one of the, the things that, um, when I talk, when I think about the parents, you know, we first think about, well, we have PTA and, um, and then I, I, I know from my own experience that not all parents um, are able to interact with the other parents. Either they have to drop off at school and they have to go to work or, you know, there's, it's, there are lots of different parenting situations that, that are, um, that prevent parents from actually making the connections to the school through the other parents. Um, and I know that's what we, that's what PTA, you know, of course is about. But I, I feel like our SED parents are sometimes, uh, reluctant to engage in some of the programs that are available for other parents because they feel like they can't be there because they have to go to a job or they have another child at home. And so, um, one, as a, as a board member, one of the things I would like to, to work with, um, are ways of outreach to all of the parents to, uh, create cohort groups among the parents. Uh, in the same way that we're trying to do that at school for, for their children. And I think we've all had the experience of the, the, the friends that our kids make when they go to school, uh, be, hopefully become our friends. Um, and they often do in, in the, in the moment. Um, but because we're all unavailable to drop off and going to our meetings with the, with the other parents, um, I think that's probably hurting right now. So that's something that I would like to look into further and, um, and let's see, I had another one here and the downtime, oh, I was really struck by the, the teachers, uh, telling us that they need more downtime. And I really hadn't thought about how for teachers right now, this is such an all-consuming job. Um, and so I'm concerned about their mental health and their well-being and, uh, so I'd like to explore some, some ways together that we could try to lift that, that weight, um, from the teachers and at least make them feel like we, we appreciate and know, uh, what they're, they're doing for our students and their families.
Yes, yes, thank you. Mark.
Is this better, Jeremy?
That is better.
Okay, thanks. I, uh, I took the cat off of the top of my computer. So I have several, so I'll just throw out one and then if there's other folks, I did, I do want to support two things. Um, what I was hearing Chris say, and Chris, maybe I got this right or wrong. We have the board policies, we have the bylaws, but we don't have a protocol, um, for when we get together to actually, to use those. So I'm wondering whether I caught that right. But what, what I, what I want to express is I, I think we ought to explore, um, some of the benefits to students and the community that we've seen because of the pandemic. And specifically what I'm talking about is the schools that have brought back small groups in the morning, small groups in the afternoon, and the value of having a teacher with just a small group of students. So we know from research that student, when teachers are with eighteen or less, they have more impact um, on the academics and the social skills. Um, so I don't want to lose that. I want to hope that we can explore that in some way and maintain it. So that's my big one for now. And if another board member has a hand up, then I'll step aside and wait again.
I haven't seen any hands yet, but I might have missed some. So you can have the floor a little longer, Mark. Oh, Becca pointing, no. Oh, Ellen, Ellen, sorry, you're so far from the camera. Uh, so we could, we could come back to you, Mark.
Thank you. It's piggybacking on what Mark said a little bit and, uh, also on what some comments Mr. Mayfield made in terms of, uh, things we've learned during this time. And I would really like to see, uh, those who are interested in doing this, uh, in terms of, of staff and Mr. Mayfield that paid attention to this, um, really assess, take some time to assess what has worked well during this time, some of the unexpected, uh, benefits. And I know there have been some, I think we tend to think in terms of how terrible this has been. But there have been some moments of, um, learning that, that we may be able to incorporate into the, uh, the day as we, as we bring kids back. So it may have to do with technology, it may have to, these may have to do with, uh, in instructional lessons learned by teachers with reaching students who perhaps have been difficult to reach in the past. Uh, students who have ideas on the things that have worked really well for them during this time that they uh, would like to see incorporated. So just doing some assessment of, of rather than thinking about, you know, we will, of course, I'll be really happy to have our kids back and, and see them live and in person. But also that those, um, opportunities to really take a look at, what did you find was the successful moments and there, and I know there have been some. So that's what I would like to, to take a look at. I don't think we'll ever be doing things the same way. We, we won't, we won't return to things being the same as they have been completely in the past. So it's taking that, what we've learned and incorporating it, uh, as we move forward.
Great point, Mr. Shepherd. Uh, Laura Storm has scheduled meetings with all teachers at the grade level spans that we're going to be presenting to you in future meetings. So we're going to meet with all teachers K two before we, we come to you with, uh, K two presentation. And, and that's exactly the kind of feedback we'll be looking for.
Great, thank you so much.
Not seeing hands, if I don't see any hands, I, oh, Evelyn, and then I promised to go back to Mark.
So the, I think this is, am I muted or not muted?
No, you're good.
Um, so I think this kind of piggybacks on a, a lot of what people are saying, but, um, you know, we, we have a, a cohort of you know, we, we have a, a cohort of teachers who experienced distance learning and then have been back. So what I'm curious is within our own district, what are those learning trends that they saw within DL? And now that they've been back in person, what, what have they noticed before currently that can guide us as we move forward? And because they have, they've experienced both kind of the before and after. And I, I think this relates also to kind of that, you know, the SEL trends and things like that. What, what did they think was going to be a problem? And then when students came back, what kind of dissipated that can, you know, continue to guide? And how do we formalize those observations and notes that can potentially provide a potential framework for other staff members to allay their fears or to kind of check in? And then how can we use this information to potentially recalibrate in TSS to use that information as we move forward? And getting back to what Catherine said about staff, you know, and I often know, and I'm going to be the first to, to confess Dr. Prater, that as a, as a former staff member, sometimes, you know, when we, we get the surveys and things like that, staff members, you know, we don't always fill them out or. So I think it would be important, you know, when I looked at that youth truth survey and we got like such a high response rate from our students because it's kind of scheduled time within their day, that, you know, whatever feedback that we want and get from teachers. Because, you know, one of that trends, and it's not really a trend because it was a small response rate, was professional development and how they viewed it now. And it wasn't ranked that high initially it was. And then as it went through the day or the timeframe, that it wasn't, for whatever reason, meeting their needs. But again, that's not a trend. So whatever feedback we get from staff, I would hope that it's scheduled within their day, like at a staff meeting and, and so that we really get that robust feedback from all grade levels and all, all teachers and really can get, you know, that information. You know, what care, what, what care do they, you know, need? Do they, I mean, what does that look like? And so.
So intentional about gathering the feedback so it doesn't feel like something extra added onto their day that they're maybe too tired to fill out the information.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Prater.
Mark, I wanted to add a couple of other things.
Well, yeah, at least one at a time, maybe, or just. So one of the things I think that we've seen, and I'm wondering whether it can, I'd love it to see it continue, but also can see it grow. And that's, we've all discovered Zoom. And I remember one school board meeting, we had over 600 people and we've seen more public and community input than we've had. And that is part of the role of the school board. So I know we're focusing on kids, but I don't want to lose that. And I don't want to lose it or I want to examine it as well. And I think it's more specific to what Ellen was saying. But it, it, it does allow us to expand the school day. It does give us a new tool and love to see that explored. As one of the things.
Yeah. And if I would, I, I'm maybe going to broaden out your statement a little bit too, Mark, just given something that you said, and, and I think Catherine said that you're looking at how you're going to engage that parent community and maybe even the broader community and, and looking at how technology can help you do that in the future now that we have potentially more technologically literate families, just given the situation we've been in. Or if we don't, how do we maybe encourage some access and literacy for that? So that it is a platform to have some more equality and equity.
Yep, sorry. That was, that's great. And so part of that is, I guess, we're going, I'm assuming we're going to leave all the computers in hotspots, maybe not, but that may be going along with this piece. It may be too specific. I, we've, we've played with, this is, we've played with an alternative scheduling. We've examined some other districts and alternative scheduling. And I think we've seen some benefits in that. So I'd like to spend some time, if, if everybody's interested, in looking at alternative scheduling and the benefits that it can have for our, for our educational program. One of those may be utilizing more of the summer or finding a way to have kids have time off in, in other ways. So just continuing, just continuing to look at alternative scheduling as a possibility to increase learning.
And we will be looking at some of these ideas like summer learning or extended school year, extended school day or other kinds of options as we look at each grade level span and how that would play out in those. But I, I know that district staff want to discuss that with you, those kinds of ideas over this next six sessions. Oh, Ellen?
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I think that, so as we spoke earlier a little bit about a couple of our specific programs that may need a little, a little extra help, a little boost through this is, you know, we began a dual immersion program at Baywood as well as our incoming kinder, little guys at Pacheco. And, and I think these dual immersion kids may need a little, a little extra boost just because of the, the specific instruction that we, that we perform for them and, and how challenging that can be coming into a new program like that. So I'd like to make sure that those kids are well, are well-served upon our return. I also, I, I know that this is something that the board has been talking about, but to continue to put out there with our summer school offerings, we've been talking about making them much more robust and available and interesting to students than, than what we might continue the, can, consider to be the more typical summer school student candidate. So I'm really interested in, in continuing to learn about that. I know Dr. Prater has been working on that. And kind of in line with the dual immersion concerns, our little guys and literacy in, not just in our dual immersion programs, but, but all kind of making sure that we're able to, to bring, to bring these kids up to speed. We, as I think we all know, there's been data and research out there for years that the, the more time it takes kids to learn to read by third grade or so, third or fourth grade, if they're not at grade level, it's harder and harder for them to catch up. So I'd like to make sure that, that, or that, I know that literacy has been a focus in our district for a long time. So I will, I'm sure that people are keeping an eye on that. But those are, I think that especially with our, our younger kids who have spent kindergarten TK and kindergarten during COVID, that this has been their first introduction to our traditional into, to public school, to education that, that we'll need to make sure we can do what we can to give them the boost they need.
Yeah, much like English language learning, children might be struggling with less in-school time and, and teacher direction times. The, the kids that are English learner, I mean, English speakers who are learning Spanish are, are having similar, I think, situations at home as well.
Yeah, and English-speaking kids who are learning to read. You know, it's just kind of across the board. So.
Uh, and then for summer learning, I, I just wanted to note for the board that there are district staff working on a more robust summer learning plan. Kim, please correct me if I say something incorrect. And that we hope to be providing some more information as they're developing that in these six sessions as well. Mark, unless, is there anybody else? Okay, Mark?
Sorry, I just want to be, I just want to clarify. For me, and I, and I see that it's on there twice, so I just want to be careful. Summer learning is, is, is probably not the alternative scheduling that I'm most interested in. I'm most interested in somehow preserving AMPM and see if there's a model for that. I'm most interested in every other day. I'm interested in exploring shorter, shorter time in the classroom with breaks throughout the year. So really looking at extreme, I guess, alternative scheduling because we are seeing it, at least at some of the schools, as AMPM, AMPM being a tremendous value to your students in the classroom.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
No, not instead of the school year, not instead of the summer, just added possibly to the summer. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Becca.
Marilyn, did I see your hand? Sorry, your virtual background makes it hard for me to see.
Let me get myself set up here. Thank you. I, you know, these are all great thoughts from my colleagues. I, I have, I keep going back in my mind to what is sort of our, what is overarching for us and has sort of become our motto, if you will, is all means all. And when I think about that in the context of equity, the, I, I can't claim this and nor going to give attribution. Somewhere I read and it really spoke to me that equity means, not that everybody gets the same thing, that's equality. Equity means everybody gets what they need. So as we talk about coming back from distance learning, I have an interest in, in assuring that students that, that we're able to really take a look at all students. And that means that, for me, that the students who come back who are at grade level, it, it would be easy to say, okay, that group's doing okay. Because we definitely have fires. We have fires in terms of, of loss of learning and, and children who are underperforming and how we can scaffold and support them. And I know that that's critically important, but I don't want to lose focus or attention being paid to students who are high-achieving students but who may have become sort of disengaged during this, this period because they are also at risk. Though we don't often perceive them that way, they are. And they need to be stretched and challenged. So definitely dip-sticking how those kids are doing, even though the outward appearance is they'll be fine, you know, they're, they're motivated on their own. I guess I just want to be sure that the all means all means that we are really looking at all of our kids. And, and I have the full understanding that this is almost insurmountable for teachers to be able to direct personal attention to every student in their class. And I, I know that they are working as hard as they can now in distance and it's going to get harder when students come back to in-person learning to really be able to make a personal connection with each child. And, but that is what I, I would like to see. And so I guess I, my question is, how can we support teachers so that we don't break their backs to be able to really assess the needs of, of, of all students? And I hope that made sense.
Yeah, yeah, Marilyn. And I think we heard from staff earlier that the need to assess once they're back in the classroom is going to be pretty critical since they're trying to assess now, but it might not be the accurate picture given the distance learning platform. And so how do we, as the school district, support the ability for teachers and the school sites to do these assessments of the children and get a really good sense of, of where they're at? And then also in this, at least in the shorter term, think about how we can get more one-on-one or small group attention for these kids because of the gaps that we're seeing. And, and it might not just be learning gaps, it's, it's, it's connection to school gaps. And I think we're hearing that from feedback, you know, across the board, that, that connection to their school community potentially for some has gone down. So how do you help the teachers be able to create that? Does that, am I kind of capturing where you're going?
I think you've captured it. Thank you.
Uh, so Evelyn and then Mark. Oh, sorry, Chris, did, were you raising your hand earlier?
I was.
Oh, okay. Can, can I let Chris go first because he hasn't spoken yet and, and he did have his hand up? Thank you. So.
So I think, I think, first of all, there, there's little to disagree with on what my fellow board members have been talking about. I think the social emotional learning is going to be key immediately when we return from, when we return to in-person learning. There, there, there's just so much there. And I think we've talked a lot about that, but just getting kids to be comfortable back in school to, to, to learn some of the, the social things that they've missed to maybe deal with the, you know, help them deal with the traumas that they've experienced during, during this period of the pandemic where maybe there's food insecurity, maybe their parents have lost their jobs. They don't have the school connections. So the social emotional learning is going to be key, in, in my opinion. I think that's going to be really important. I think we've got to, and, and the staff has been talking about this. We've really got to look through how we address the individual student needs through our MTSS system. And I think that's a little bit about what Marilyn was talking about as well. But, you know, we, we've been talking about that this is a time when we really have to implement this with fidelity and really look at what we're doing for the individual students. Because what I'm very worried about is the learning loss that kids have, have experienced. You know, there's some of the things you read about is this, this could be a lost generation, this group of students. And the, and the, the financial consequences of the loss of learning are, are potentially great for this group of students. How do we, how do we help students get back to it? Especially, well, all of our students, but I'm particularly worried about, about our, our, our target group kids. I think just getting kids back to school, you know, we've, one of the things we've talked about is the, the limitations we have on our transportation system. How, what are we going to do about kids that depend on transportation to get back to? How can we get kids back to school? That's going to be key. And then I think the other thing, there, there's just so much. But the other thing I think we've been talking about too is we have learned a lot over this time about using virtual learning, about using our hotspots, about using our Chromebooks. Every kid's got a Chromebook now. What, what are the implications of that for our educational system moving forward? We've spent a lot of money on that. I don't see us going back to the old ways. I don't know what the new ways are, but they're out there and we need to start thinking about what that's going to mean. So tho, those are just some of the things I'm thinking about. And again, I think I, a lot of what I'm seeing up here are, are absolutely critical issues.
Yeah, so I hear you, many of you saying, you know, how and when are we going to use technology in the future? Let's use, use it for what it's useful for. And then, and, and then having this distance or other kinds of scheduling, how, how does some, the, the good pieces of that fit into the future? Am I capturing that some from what you're saying?
Yeah, and, and as you, as you mentioned that, Adrian, there, there are going to be, there are going to be dangers with the increased technology, I'm thinking. One of the things that, one of the things I love is the notion of, of augmented reality and virtual reality, right? In terms of learning, being able to learn and help kids experience things that they've never, that they've never experienced before, you know? Tour the inside of the pyramids, for example. I'm excited about that, but, but I think there are dangers there too. I think as we immerse kids in these systems, there's going to be more chance for us to propagandize students. That's not quite what I'm, that's not quite the word I want. But we'll be able to influence them in ways. in ways that that there, there will just be more vulnerabilities. And how we approach that, what we teach kids will have some pretty significant impacts. And I think they're going to be very powerful, what we're seeing. So in other words, if, 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 if I'm in a visual, if I'm in a virtual reality headset, how that's presented to me is going to influence an awful lot. We're going to have to be really careful about stuff like that. So those are just some things that, that I see in the future, but that are positive too. You know, I mean, you know, and, and I'm going to stop with this, but when we took kids to New York City to sing at Carnegie Hall, there were kids that have never left this county. How can we help them expand their experiences?
Yep. So we have, I have about five more minutes for discussion time. I know that Evelyn wanted to say something and Mark wanted to say something. So Evelyn.
Thank you. Am I muted? No. Um, so I, I would like to revisit the, and I don't know any other way to say it, but revisiting the, what is our overarching goal data point? We keep, you know, we've been using the same data points, so I would, you know, encourage us to be kind of advocates and a bit progressive in those data points. And so that's one thing. The other thing is going back to having, for those of, if you have or haven't not had the opportunity to go visit the sites that have been able to be in session and talking to those teachers. Many things of, you know, what we're saying about, you know, social emotional learning and trauma and things like that. Just from talking to those teachers, some of those things dissipate. And so, given what Marilyn and Chris are saying, you know, within that, what, what are those negatives that we really do need to use out? And then given the models that we have from our pilot programs, really, you know, what, what does seem to, to come back? Kids, kids seem to, in talking with teachers and observing it from afar, kids seem to be coming, adjusting to, you know, the protocols and things very quickly and easily. So I, I guess, you know, taking that information that we have, and again, how do we operationalize it from a standpoint that our teachers can access that so that it's not coming from top down, but it's coming from the experience and success that we have. So building that kind of what we talked about, bottom up kind of point of view. So.
Now, you already have teachers that have experienced that shift from distance to in-person. How can they help their colleagues as they are going to have to do the same thing? Mark.
Okay, real quickly, so I, I think part of this is going to need to be looking at staffing. I listened to what Marilyn was saying and, and some of my own thoughts. So I'd like to add just maybe a, a subhead and not try to fill it out, but it's part of that. Not so much as taking care of staff and, and helping them through what they've been, but also whether we need to increase staff or put staff in, in new positions in other ways. Second, I think one of the things that has at least been expressed to me is, we've come a long way towards techno, equity and technology, but I don't think we're there yet. And I think we ought to take a, a good look at that. And I can give you an example. Some people are having great, the hotspots are working and for some people, they're still having trouble getting what we would call getting online.
Yeah, connectivity still an issue for students. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, um, is there anyone else who wants to share a thought before I talk about what we're going to do next? Marilyn is waving her hand. Sorry, Marilyn. There's a lot of little, it's different than in-person, for sure.
No, it's okay. I just, when you couldn't see my hand before, I thought, well, I'll make my hand really. I'll wave it up there.
Hey, whatever you need to do to get my attention, I, I fully support.
I, I don't want to be a damp blanket on, on all of these great thoughts, but I think that we definitely need to have a bullet point that says in light of all of the things that we've discussed, we have a responsibility to keep our eye on the budget. Because when we talk about layer, perhaps layering on more staff or doing more, you know, reducing class size, you know, all, all great ideas that come with a cost. And we have a fiduciary responsibility to, to be mindful of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is a, I thank you so much for all of these thoughts. You know, I see, again, as we talked about, this is an iterative process that there is planning going on as we're doing these strategic sessions. So having this input from the very first session, I think is super useful for staff as they are working on the MTSS, as they're working on the LCAP to kind of hear what you're initially thinking. You'll see this again, coming up in our future sessions, all, all this that we've captured for you today. And we'll be gathering more information and as we go throughout, we'll also be working and trying to prioritize with each other. What are those top pieces that you particularly want to focus attention on? Cause given Marilyn's point, there, there is a finite amount of budget in order to do these things. We're not going to get to a ton of prioritization today, because today is really about setting the stage and getting some initial thoughts from you. But we will definitely come back to that part of it going forward. If it's all right with everyone, I'd like to spend the next 10 minutes talking about next steps to really make sure that we're getting you the adequate things that you need for future sessions. Does that sound okay? And Kim, would you mind sharing that last next step slide again? And while she's bringing that up, um, so our next strategic board session is on March 11th. And we will be talking about preschool to the third grade grade span. And you know, our idea behind this is that we will be giving you packets of information about this particular cohort grade span to absorb in order to inform your thinking in advance of these sessions. And so some of the things that you'll be getting in these packets will be data on current achievement and student needs for that particular age group. And what they think projected needs might be for the next 10 years. Cause remember, we're going to be talking about the short term and the longer term in these conversations going forward. You'll be hearing a little bit more about what community considerations are, are particularly at play for that cohort. So for this next one, childcare and, and what's going on with the childcare study and those things could be coming into your packet. Important tools and the rationale and research behind those tools that the, the staff are considering to use for those age groups. Maybe some innovative methods, or this is where some of the summer school and, and different scheduling might come up in your packet, discuss how that's going to play out for that. Great. But input, but first and foremost, staff want to make sure that they're providing you the kind of information that you want to see that makes you feel like you have the raw material to have a robust conversation at each one of these meetings. And so I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to, to get your feedback on what particular kinds of information you'd like to see in these packets. And, and even we can use the preschool through third as an example of what you would like to see for that. You saw what we put together for this one, and the future packets will probably be a little bit more extensive than what you had here. Is there anything that you want to see or you don't want to see going forward? Evelyn, excuse me, Eve?
Eve, you're, you're muted?
Oh, sorry, I didn't mute myself. Somebody must have muted me. I don't know. At any rate, so I, as a primary teacher, I'd, I'd love to hear about how unstructured times such as time on the playground, maybe even lunchtime will be observed closely to, to look for any potential emotional problems going forward. If we could beef up rather than having a duty, you know, an adjunct duty person try to settle emotional interactions between kids, that we use the bullying pro, I understand there's a very good bullying program. Use that very, very methodically on the playground to settle disputes as well as having professionals there when, when everybody is first back. Because I know unstructured time can, is not that easily handled by a great number of students.
Thank you. Yeah. The packets will address tools and, and information on, on academics as well as social emotional learning and, and, and life skills and those things. Uh, is there anybody else who wants to add Catherine? Oh, and Chris, Catherine, and then Chris. And Mark. Catherine, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself, Catherine.
Catherine, check the, the top of your screen. There should be a box asking you to unmute. And to let everybody know, we muted everybody just due to the dings that were going off. So just watch your muting on mute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to check in and find out whether when we say we're doing, getting feedback from parents and teachers and students that we mean, we'll actually hear, you're actually going to ask preschoolers some of these questions. I'm hopeful that will directly. Is that going to work?
Rick, do you want to maybe touch on what you were discussing that you were going to do in advance of each packet?
Yeah, we were planning on interviewing teachers at that particular grade level span. So when we do the K two or K three presentation, we'll have met with the K three group and invited every single teacher in the district to a group to talk about like, what are the silver linings, what has gone well? You know, that type of thing before we present that information to you. We hadn't planned like specific student yet, Catherine, but we certainly could reach out and get student input.
And you maybe have some survey information that you've already collected over the last couple of months that you could pull from for the packets as well. Yes?
Correct.
That would be, that'd be fine too.
Great. So some student, whatever student information input that they have. Yes, absolutely.
We have Chris, Mark and Ellen.
Thank you.
So I don't, I don't have a prefer, an exact preference on what we get. What I would ask is that we get it in timely fashion. I'd prefer not to get a big data dump a couple of days before, before the meeting. So as things dribble out, I, I'd really like to see them come along so that I could read them, think about them, rather than having to just like cram, cram through.
Yeah, absolutely. Chris, thank you. I, I forgot to mention this when I was going over the process, but our goal is to get you packets three weeks before your board session meeting. So that means the next packet you would get from us is February 18th, I believe, if I'm doing my math correctly. And so you'll have time to, to absorb that. And we'll also be, Becca and I reaching out for some conversation one-on-one with you and/or survey one-on-one before sessions, knowing that we're going to give you some time with that packet to absorb it before we then ask you to come talk to us about it. That, that's our ultimate goal. Uh, sorry, Mandy, it was Chris and then Ellen and then Mark?
Mark and then Ellen.
Okay, Mark and then Ellen.
Thanks very much. Good points. I, I, I'd like to suggest there may be some research out there and rather than getting, unless other board members want, rather than getting the full report, and this strikes me as very amusing actually. There's a service or a group that does research and then research upon and condenses it. It's called Eric, Eric's, Eric Digest. And I'd like the staff to maybe look at that as a way to get us more information in a, in a compact format. It, it does have information about more interaction with teachers without hiring more staff and, and those types of things. So more interaction does not mean necessarily increased staff. Also, to Marilyn's point, maybe we can have some information at least early on on where the savings were during this distance learning and whether any of those can be extended. And, and so some of the impacts on some of these things that you're going to be sending us. And let me see. I think that's it for right now, but thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ellen and then Eve.
Sorry, thank you. One thing I'm interested in, we have had kids, some of our little guys in school now for a little bit, those who have been in, I'd be really curious to get some information about how they're doing. You know, kind of a compare and contrast perhaps about what, what we're, what we're looking at here in terms of literacy, learning, I know how the, and the teacher experience, especially with things like the masks and speaking, learning phonics and sounds and things like that, how that, how that's all working, but also just in terms of the, of their academics, what they're seeing with the kids who are present in the classroom. I also am interested in, again, I know Marilyn brought up our fiduciary duty, Mark just raised cost savings. But as we move forward, and it may be premature at this point, since we're kind of just at a brainstorming stage, it seems to me, but making sure that Ryan is closely, that, that we're all aware of the costs involved. Maybe there are some savings here, but typically my experience as a trustee has been that generally when we brainstorm, we find that the costs are far outweighing savings we may experience, but just to have some, some, keep that in mind and have that, know what we're, what we're continuing to, to look at in terms of our, our budget and future planning. And I know that Ryan stays closely on top of that. I'm sure his head is spinning right now as he's hearing all these ideas for things people are suggesting, but it's important to keep that, keep, keep aware of that as, as Marilyn pointed out. So thank you.
Okay. I know we're getting close to 11 and I know that even, I thought maybe I saw Catherine's hand and I see Chris's hand. So if you could quick, and maybe Evelyn, so if you could quickly let us know and then always know that you can email, would Mandy be the best person to email the additional ideas of what you would like to see in your packet, Eric?
Yes, that would be perfect.
Great. So just maybe really briefly with those individuals and then, because I do want to give Josh just like two minutes, three minutes to, to tell about action plans. So if you do have any other ideas of what you'd like to see, please email Mandy. So Eve, Catherine, Chris, Mark, if you can make it, oh, Evelyn, if you can make it fast.
Okay. In a nutshell, I'm open. Okay. In a nutshell, regarding the LCAP, as I was going through and it has, everything is itemized as to the cost and so forth. And it was probably made before COVID hit or at least during that time. So if we could have a highlight of what was realized, accomplished and carried out or not. And so that we could then see what, what things were, where the savings were, because we couldn't do them. So there was the savings, that type of thing.
Yeah. Catherine and then Evelyn?
I'll, I'll cede my time to Evelyn.
Okay, Evelyn? Oh, Evelyn, you're on mute.
Models of, you know, we are models of, you know, preschool TK and Kinder. We have some inconsistency. So what are the successful models and paradigms that we can have consistency across our sites? And what is, as we are facing new challenges, do we need to relook at those programs? Looking at disaggregating the data from our TK sites, who is actually availing themselves of the, the, our TK. A focus on PBL within these grades so that it's not just attached to IONVATE, but it's going to kind of integral to how these kids learn. And I think a refocus on kind of our science and not, you know, making it really robust and rich. And I know there's time constraints, so how do we deal with that as a separate kind of robust subject? And then last, the, the VAPA. You know, music is kind of like another language. And for those students who are not in a dual immersion, if all students have access. if all students have access to music at an early age, does that also derive neural, neurolingual benefits that can carry us through from pre-K all the way up?
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to let Chris have, have the last thought if that's okay, Mark. Thanks.
So one of the questions I have, and I guess it's for maybe Adrian, Becca and the staff. What we've heard of is a lot of requests for information from staff and I'm a little worried about that. So the first, and I've got two things. The first thing is I want to make sure that the staff has some sense of what we're asking. I mean, I, I'm hearing a lot of requests and I'm, and I'm thinking it's going to take a lot of staff time. So I want to make sure that the staff, that somehow there's a process for getting through that, that doesn't overburden the staff when they've got all the rest of their, the work to do. So if you could answer that first, and then I have something else I'd like to ask.
Yeah, for sure. And you know, Becca was just making me, make sure to, to, to preface everything with, to you is that we will do our best to get you the kinds of information that you're asking for, knowing that staff are pulling this together for you. And we'll get you hopefully close to what you'd like. And, and, and some of the things we're talking about are even more things that maybe you're going to need to analyze over a longer time period and feeding you that information as we can. And I'm going to let Rick say something to that point, since he and his staff are pulling this all together.
This conversation is fantastic and I would love to be able to provide everything the board wants to make good decisions, but it was mentioned that you'd have the information three weeks before. That would be next Thursday. And, and you know, we, we don't have the forum scheduled to get that information from the teachers. It's just, there's a lot of other things going on as well. So if we could maybe compromise and say two weeks before, we could, we could have the information to you. That would be tremendously helpful to us to have a little bit of extra time to, to gather. We want to do a quality job.
Well, and I, and I think the recognition is, Adrian, I think you said it, or maybe, you know, maybe Rick's alluding to it. We're not going to get to everything. We're not, you know, all the, all the requests for information. I think what my expectation is you're going to try to synthesize those into larger pots that will help us with the discussions we need to have. I see a shake in your head, Adrian. Is that kind of what you guys are thinking?
Yes. Cause yeah, for sure.
Okay. And then the, the second thing, you know, a lot of what we're talking about is, is sort of predicated on the fact that we will be returning to school soon. I know that that's an interest of, of a lot of our community. I know that's an interest of a lot of our board members. Dr. Prater, do you have any comments about your thinking how that might look given the new requirements from the state and, you know, what we're anticipating from the state? And I don't know if you want to address that now, or if you want to address that after Josh talks to us.
Well, I, I think it's appropriate to do that now and then Josh can, can finish up for us. So Mr. Unger, my, my thoughts on this are that our plan to reopen our schools back in November 2020, that plan was predicated on the best available science and the best available health guidance that we had at the time. And that guidance and our plan was credible, given what we had all the way up to January 14th, 2021. So it was good for about three months, maybe two and a half months. And given the shifting sands and the, the learned, the, what science and healthcare professionals are learning about COVID, they came out on January 14th, the California Department of Public Health came out on January 14th with revised safety guidelines specific to elementary K six. And in those guidelines, they, they changed the parameters of what was considered safe. Given that, they also, we also heard from the Center for Disease Control, CDC. And they supported that guidance, and maybe I have it backwards, but CDC and CDPH both came together and reported new and revised school safety guidelines for elementary. Our current plan is not in alignment any longer with safety guidelines. That's a really important thing to note. And so our MOU with our union groups, our commitment to our parent community and the communications that we've made are all predicated on what was once the best available science and support, supporting guidelines. So where we are now is under a situation where we have to pivot. We really need to pivot to align ourselves to the best available science and safety guidelines. And the state of California is shifting rapidly to, to that particular guidance. So we have a board meeting coming up on Tuesday and we are currently in an adjusted case rate of 19.3, I believe. And the CDPH is saying that when you're below 25 per 100,000, you can safely reopen elementary schools. Now there are some things you have to do, specific criteria that have to be met, and we've been working on that. But what's really missing in this whole conversation is that our plan is no longer in alignment with the safety guidance. And I believe we have an obligation and probably the legal responsibility to align our plan to that guidance. So I also want you to know, as all of you are well-read and hardworking trustees, that Dr. Bornstein from the Slow County Public Health Department came out yesterday afternoon and said that we, that she expects Slow County to move into the red tier as early as next week. And as if that isn't enough, and I'm, and I applaud that, I'm excited about that. However, the guidance from CDPH have also changed, has also changed. Where before it was a red tier plus 14 days. And then about a month ago, they changed it to red tier plus 10 days that you can return for secondary, so middle and high school. And now the, the recommendations are, are red tier plus five days. So we have some pivoting to do and some maneuvering to do with our reopening plan. And personally, I'm excited with the idea that we can safely reopen our schools. I'm excited and for the idea that our kids can have the much deserved in-person learning. I'm also excited that we have a really good safety reentry plan with some modifications that need to be made, that our team has developed and you have previously approved. And we have a pilot currently in motion that is showing that it can be done really well and safely without any significant spread. I share this with you because I think it's time for us to confront this or embrace it, if you will, and, and move this along. I met this morning with our president of our Teachers Association and had this conversation. We could find ourselves very quickly in a situation where in the red tier and, and we're going to need to do some communications with our parent community. We're going to have to do communications with our staff community as well as our student community to make sure that they're ready and prepared when that day comes. I believe that we, we have different considerations based on some of the criteria for elementary versus secondary. I think the preparations are different. I think the communications are different. And I'm working very up, in an upfront way, as is my staff, on some of these targeted dates of reentry. And, and why that's important is that our teachers have to make plans themselves and preparations themselves, because their own personal lives are impacted by this return to school. And so how we do this and how we transition is going to be just as important as the decision to re, to come back. So I, there are a lot of considerations here and I want to do it well, as you would expect me to do. So, so given that, I'm working closely with Josh Whiteside on making sure that our board's reopening plan and strategy is in alignment with best practice, that in alignment with the best medical advice and guidance that there is available right now. And it's changing by the week. So we have some work to do here and I'd like to tackle it immediately if I could. Mr. Unger?
It's my, you know, I'm, thank you, Dr. Prater. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that the board not engage in discussion about this, what Dr. Prater's talking about right now. Because what I'm concerned about, and Josh, you might be able to help me with this, is that because this will be an action item at an upcoming board meeting, that any discussion right now could be considered a violation of the Brown Act. Is that, is that an accurate description, Josh?
Yes, I think it's, I think it's only relevant in terms of informing the fact that the decision on reopening may change the direction of the sort of short-term planning that we've talked about. And it does relate in terms of the learning loss and the compounding effects of that. But to preserve that conversation and to make sure that we kind of have a belt and suspenders approach to making sure that there's a solid foundation for that decision and any change to the reopening plan, I would recommend that it be discussed at the Tuesday board meeting.
Right. And so Dr. Prater, my understanding is that this will be our primary topic of next Tuesday's board meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Did someone else?
Yeah, and while Josh has the floor, there's just one other item that I wanted to make sure we covered under our agenda item. And that was for him to give you a very brief understanding about his action plans. He's working on as the same time that we're doing these board strategic sessions and then, and then we will be done with all of you for the day and we'll, we'll see you next time.
Yes, thank you very much, Adrian. I appreciate you bringing us back to that.
No problem.
So just real briefly, so I'll, I'll keep it limited to a couple of minutes here. So as the board is well aware, there is a good legal strategy and foundation for establishing action plans around ideas and thoughts on moving forward. A part of that is to make sure that there's documentation of the great work that the district has already done as well as is committed to doing. That builds trust within the community as a primary focal point. And secondly, it also demonstrates a record, which in the legal world is really important and oftentimes falls by the wayside when staff are just having meetings or the board is just verbalizing without writing down what are the great ideas and things going forward. So my goal through this process is to collect a lot of the information, synthesize some of the recommendations and thought processes behind the strategic planning, both for short-term changes and long-term changes. And then creating action plans either around the grade span or just more generally, long-term vision planning for the district. And that'll create a record and we'll be able to send it back to you, put it in front of you for your feedback and further input. So that way it's not my voice, but it's your voice as a whole, as the board.
Thank you, Josh. So I, I know we've gone a little bit over than we were supposed to, but please, if there's anything you want to share between now and our next session, you can email Mandy. Becca and I will also be reaching out to each of you individually to introduce ourselves over email. So you'll have our contact information and you can reach out to us. And I will just close with, we'll work with staff to make sure that we have a, a succinct but robust packet for your information in a timely manner in advance of the next board meeting in the, you know, three to two weeks ahead of time.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So board, it's 11:18 right now. I believe that I certainly need a little break. Let's take, it's actually 11:19. Let's take an 11-minute break and reconvene at 11:30 with the item 6.02, Learning and Social Pods for ASR students, and then 6.03, Measure D update. Okay? Everybody good with that? Great. Thank you. We'll see you all at 11:30.
Hola, Laura.
Hola.
You gonna do this in Spanish?
Well, we'll be done in about 30 seconds.
Si, como no.
Should I get my kids to come out and try? How's it going up there, Rick?
Going good. We miss you.
Oh, I miss being there.
Drink all your bubbly water. Thank you for leaving that, so.
Good. Have you gotten through all the K-cups yet?
Hey, it looks like everybody's starting to come back. Just as a reminder, we're still recording. Excuse me, I'll fix that barking.
I muted. Okay, let's see, we have, do we have a quorum of board members? We have, let's see, I'm here. Catherine's here, Eve's here, Marilyn's here, Marcus here. I think the Ellen's here. The only person we're missing is Evelyn. But we're going to get started because it's 11:30 and we need to be mindful of the time. So let's move on to item number 6.02, Learning and Social Pods for At-Risk Students. Laura?
Thank you. Mandy, can I share my screen?
To be able to now.
Okay. Well, good morning. I'm so excited to be able to come and talk about pods with you. I think you will find it exciting and kind of a ray of sunshine in what has been a, a little bit of a heavy meeting, right? Thinking about all of these COVID impacts. So pods for at-risk students. So the purpose of creating these pods is tier-two support. They are really the best intervention that we have right now. And they really run multiple purposes. So it may be a student is struggling academically and needs to be back on campus. Maybe it's that they're very disengaged. And then they're probably struggling academically and need to be back on campus. Maybe there's some SEO red flags. And so the counselor has said, can we please bring them back? And so they're folded into the pod. So there's a lot of reasons to do this, and it really is our strongest support that we have in the distance learning time. One of the big benefits is the positive connection to an adult and to school and to each other. You know, the students have to stay six feet apart, but they, they get a social opportunity and the pod leader is now a, a positive adult that has eyes on them every day and can check in. And then they're back, you know, re-engaged in the school, in the campus. They're seeing their principal. They're seeing, you know, maybe their teacher walk by because that teacher is teaching in another classroom, and so they're feeling that connection again. It gives that structured environment. I've talked to a lot of pod leaders about how we have students who are really on their own to do their distance learning, and so now they have someone that can help structure their day. You know, make checklist for assignments, check in that they're turned in, that kind of thing. Supporting students with, again, time management. It goes back to that structure piece. Okay, you have this long to get this assignment done. How are you going to break that up? You know, those kind of things that a lot of our students just need support with. Helping with assignment completion, making sure that they submit the assignments that are completed. That seems to be a big obstacle for a lot of students, believe it or not, is hitting submit. And then just monitoring student focus and attention to the online classroom. So I watch my daughter at home who will kind of be like upside down in her chair, it seems during Zoom, and so helping them attend to the screen and really like focus in on that, not open another tab and play a game, but, but be, you know, in the moment. So this is a timeline of where we're at with in-person small groups. So September, we started some special education groups. October and November, when we were in the red tier, some sites started to open some other small groups. And then that sort of lost its momentum as we kind of went into purple and it got a little more complex. And then in January, we put a call out to all district employees saying, would you be interested in being a pod leader? We have people that work, you know, part-time that would be willing to add time to their day. We have people who maybe have, you know, a little more flexibility in their schedule than they would normally have. For example, custodians, you know, they may not have quite as much, and they said, I could step up and, you know, work with kids for a little bit during the day. And so really putting that out there. And in this time, we got, we had interest from Sobs, we had interest from retired teachers that are coming back. So it was really neat to see those district employees who wanted to step up. There were some, I had to tell them, I'm sorry, you have to continue to do your regular job because we need you there, but they had such a heart for kids that they wanted to, to step into the role. So so that was neat. And then we expanded our edjoin posting so that we could have kind of two positions, a certificated pod leader, which is paid with subpay, and then a classified instructional assistant, which makes an hourly rate. So we have these two different postings on edjoin for pod leaders. We've been interviewing candidates. We've been onboarding them. The MTSS TOSSAs train them before we send them to the sites. And then we opened our first pods February 1st. I had said at the beginning of January, I want some open on February 1st, and I was told, well, that's a really aggressive timeline. And I was like, no, we gotta do this. So we started a few and it's just expanding now in a big way. So the current in-person small groups, there's a document linked here that shows you every single one that may or may not be a pod. There are some teachers who are bringing back some students in the afternoon. We're not considering that a pod necessarily, but they're on the document. But for my purposes, there have been over 45 pod leaders placed or in process of hiring. Meaning they are, you know, having their references checked or they're getting their fingerprints or they've already started. So we've brought through 45, and that's roughly 40 pods. We have some places where we have, someone's doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then another person's doing Tuesday, Thursday, and so we've had to kind of connect them to make the pod. But it's around 45, 40, 45, and I anticipate by next week we'll be over 50. We have started doing weekly interviews because we keep getting applicants, so we are just continuing to roll. The students are really carefully selected. So sites talk about what do they want the configuration of the pod to be? And who should be in it? Get teacher input, counselor input. And it's really thoughtful. Funny story, one site word got out that this was happening and they, the office started getting calls from parents asking if their students could be in the pod. But these were students that didn't really need to be in the pod necessarily. So like, we're going to start a waiting list pod request. So it's very intentional. It's not just whoever wants to do it can do it, but, but there's thought to it. The schedules are varied based on site needs. So there's a lot of pods that are just mornings. There's some pods that are just afternoons. There's some that are all day. There's some that are Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It just sort of depends on what the site needs and what they can put together with staff. And then it could be a single grade level. It could be a grade span. So I know some sites have like a first, second, third grade pod. Or Slow High sort of has it by grade level, ninth grade. They're getting ready to open a 10th grade recovery pod. And then school counselors, if they want to see a student that is there in person, they can do that. And, and that's, and they've inserted themselves into the pods. So a lot of the counselors, you know, are checking in, walking in the pod like, like a principal might do, right? And, and kind of saying hi in the morning and I'm here and then, you know, kind of backing out. And then community counseling services is planning to bring the high school MFT crew back to the campus for in-person. And so the students that are there can see their MFT in person if they choose. I have heard, talking with Shelley Benson, that the, the virtual world has been really great for the MFTs because they can see students at 6 o'clock at night. It opens up more scheduling. So some students may want to do that in person at school and some may say, no, I want to keep it virtual, like in the evening. So it sort of depends on the student and the situation. So what's next for, for our pods? So we are continuing the recruitment and the training. So the TOSSAs have scheduled weekly trainings. In the trainings, they cover basic things around classroom management, student engagement, helping students when they're stuck on an assignment, how to navigate all of our technology platforms, that's a big one, before they go, before the pod leader goes to the site. The marriage and family therapists, they are one of the groups getting vaccinated. So we may see more of them returning to campus as they get their vaccines. And then we are thinking about what is the role of the pod leader when we return in person? And I know at elementary, we've talked about, we'll have students, you know, that are with their teacher in the morning and maybe they need to stay in their pod group in the afternoon for support with their asynchronous work. So we're going to start, now that we're hearing rumblings of the red tier, I want to start talking in brainstorming with middle and high school about what it might look like there, but we will retain these employees in this kind of capacity until at least probably the end of the school year. We're going to need them. So the classified position is a limited term position, so we won't have to do any layoffs. And then the certificated is a subposition, so we can let them know, you know, this is the end of, of the position. But we will definitely need them when we come back. So we will continue to use them and just morph what we do. So it's very exciting when I think about roughly 40 to 50 pods, that's probably around 500 students that we have managed to bring back or in the process of bringing back here in the next couple of weeks. That's really, really exciting. So questions? Thoughts about pods?
So is that, yeah, any board members have questions? It looks like Evelyn and Catherine, you have your hand up? And anyone else? We'll start there. So Evelyn and then Catherine?
Thanks, Laura. I had the fortunate opportunity to see the pods in action, so I, you know, really appreciate that monitoring of students with their you know, actual in-person, you know, not in-person, but when they're, the teacher's on the computer and making sure that the students are able to attend, and then sometimes the asynchronous. The question I had, and I, I was thinking about this, as however we move per Dr. Prater's recommendation, how does that, you know, as I've watched the, the pods, you know, like, I think I saw one pod, it was a kinder through fourth grade, and then I've seen some more kind of aligned, you know, like a two, three or something. How do those pods, given the, the safety cohort recommendation, how does that, how are we not going to navigate that? Are we, you know what I'm saying? We're trying to keep those pods intact, but then there's that, their meeting in person for, in their classroom, but then there's the safety cohort, or is that to be determined?
I I would have to say that I don't know this, the rules about that well enough to just speak to it on the fly, but I'm going to guess Kim does. And I saw that she took her mic off, so I'll address that.
Yeah, Evelyn, make sure I understand the question correctly. Do you mean how the, what the pods may potentially look like when the students are back in person?
Well, you know, I guess right now, we, you know, there is these existing pods that, you know, that that I've had the opportunity to see. And so, and Mrs. Storm is mentioning, you know, trying to continue to support students in this way. But we have students that potentially are going to be in the back, in their classroom with their teacher and their, that pod. And then, you know, that pod of learning, they will then go with that same leader from, you know, students from different classrooms? Or the, will the pods have to be totally reconfigured, you know, when we, and you may not know the answer to that. But it just, as you were talking, I was just like, oh, you know, how do, how, how does that move forward? So.
In the current guidelines, they would say that the students need to stay stable with the same group for, especially for elementary. And that that's the safest plan. You can have adults change for a couple of cohorts. So let's say you have a group of ten that you're going to pull from Mrs. Frame's class. And they're going to stay in the afternoon in their pod. Then it it would be acceptable to have a specialist come in to work with that group. Not necessarily the the teacher, since the teacher will have their afternoon group to work from. So that's the current guidelines, although I will tell you, these guidelines, you know, change frequently.
So what what might, speaking to Mrs. Storms, is that as we're doing this great work with multi-grade, you know, levels that that reconfiguration for the pods, if indeed the same safety guidelines, which changes that we might have to do the pods by grade levels, if at the elementary, and that's all changing, I know that.
We will no doubt have to make adjustments to pods when we come back for in-person.
Thank you, thank you.
Catherine, I think you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Just a quick few questions. I'm curious about how the pod leaders are trained. Is there a pod leader boot camp? And who runs that and how we do that? Yeah, I get that, so I was just curious about how that happens.
Yes, so the MTSS TOSSAs, Chelsea Smiley and Michelle Cass, I believe you met them at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago. They run a pod leader training. They've been doing it in person. So the pod leaders come in and really, it's about an hour and a half. It sort of depends on the pod leader's experience. We have some retired teachers and they don't need a lot of support with, say, like classroom management strategies. Then we have other people who've never worked in a school that need more support with classroom management strategy. So Michelle and Chelsea try to kind of tailor it that way. But they cover, you know, basics of classroom management, they cover student engagement, they cover how to help students when they're stuck. They go through all the technology platforms with them, so they know what they're looking at. You know, if they're looking at a Google Classroom stream or something. And then they talk about safety protocols. And the pod leaders often have questions that are very site-specific. And so the principals know ahead of time that that's the case and that they're going to need to connect with the pod leader. But we just want to give them kind of a basic foundation to set them up for success when they're there. So yes, kind of a little pod leader boot camp. We've just scheduled them out each week through like the beginning of March for now, because we know we have people coming on. So they're just sort of this running thing that we're doing.
That's it. And I think it's wonderful for the students, obviously. And but I think also for the for the pod leaders that are coming in, I think they want to be given that, even once. It's a, it's a great mix. So thank you for caring about us.
I will tell you that we have had some really outstanding applicants on the certificated side that principals are wondering if they may potentially be teachers in our district. We've had some classified people come through that are really very, very highly trained, you know, doctorates, and they just want to contribute. And then we've had some students at Cal Poly that are like liberal studies majors that want to be teachers. And so they're getting this opportunity. So it's been really neat to interact with these people and get to know them. And to see them, you know, go out to the sites and make this impact.
Let's see, I think Mark, is there any other board members for me to recommend? Mark, and then back to Evelyn?
Yeah, Laura, just real quickly, good explanation on the boot camp. I truly appreciate the extra work that you're doing. There are some regulations for the district about adults with kids, one of them being a TB test. So are are we, how are we handling that, you know, those regulations?
Yeah, so, you know, when we have people that are already district employees, great example, substitutes. We have a person that is a translator for us that is stepping in to be a pod leader. Those are very easy. They have their fingerprints, they have their TB tests. The others, it's slower because we have to onboard them in our traditional HR, you know, process. And I really need to give a huge shout out to the people in the HR department, Beth, Alisa, Brittany. They have been wonderful. This is a lot of extra load for them. And they're spending a lot of time helping me out to get this done well and, but to get it done quickly. They they understand the sense of urgency behind it. So it's really been a huge team effort to to do it right and get these people the things that they need. But get it done quickly. So I really appreciate them.
Evelyn, I think you had your hand up again?
Yeah, sorry, one question. Is the capacity of our pod and future pod able going to to meet the the need? That's one question. And the other thing is, I know that we were asking, you know, our pod leaders, what sites, you know, they would, they would be willing or or really were gravitating towards, but are we able to really meet the demands at our highest need schools, given, you know, their, maybe their location? Or may they, maybe they have less contact with people of certain skills or things? How are we able to kind of direct that so that our highest need schools have really the, I guess, most trained pot, you know, pod leaders and things like that? Is there?
Yeah, I've been trying to keep it fairly even and look at, you know, Title I schools. Look at school size. For example, Pacheco is a very large elementary school. So they need more than maybe, say, Monarch Grove, just sheer size-wise. But it is, it is interesting because you have parents. We have had parents apply that need to work at the site where their child is at. And the principals are very willing to do that. And so as we need these people, we're trying to kind of make that good match. I think, though, that we are finding that we're able to get people and able to get high-quality people in in good positions. So, you know, one of the things that's coming up is, at a couple of sites, is facility space and capacity. So principals are trying to figure out, I have teachers that are coming to their classroom and teaching. And I don't want to make them teach from home. Where do I put my next pod? So we're trying to think those things through too. It's all pretty complex, but we're getting, we're getting good people in good places. And I have to give credit to to principals who've done things like advertise it in their newsletter or talk to their teachers about people they might know. That's how we're getting a lot of our applicants is word of mouth. So, yeah, but Title I schools have definitely been a priority. Credit recovery has been a huge priority as well. So Slow High has ten pods going right now. So it's exciting.
Any, anybody, any other questions from the board? You know, I should ask, is there anybody from the public that wants to ask us about this? We'll take a look at that. No, not seeing anybody there. Well, Laura, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And, you know, I'm glad we're able to do this. It sounds like it's very complicated and, but but it's working. So thank you, thank you, and thanks to everybody and all the staff too. All right, let's go on to item 6.03, Measure D update. I'll bet you that's Mr. Pinkerton.
I'm here for you. Hey, Manny, can I share my screen, please?
Can be good to go.
Okay. So just, I just wanted to give the the board a quick overview, kind of where we're at from a scheduling standpoint, projects. Both the Morro Bay and High School, a couple of pictures I have for you, the Slow High track as well as the Morro Bay gym, or not gym, quad, I should say. So I'll go through that. So again, in Morro Bay High School right now, Building B, which is a classroom building, is quickly coming to completion, actually. I think it's going to be done before they they expected in terms of August start. I think it's going to be done by June, July at the latest. So that's going to be really critical because we're going to be able to move the teachers from the other classroom building C into B, which will then potentially help us start that building sooner than expected. So the quad area throughout the quad at Morro Bay High School is currently under demo right now. So they're, you know, getting rid of all the concrete and lines and bringing in new dirt. So going to put the new sewer in. But the board is going to receive a GMP for Tuesday night for approval. And that's the actual construction side of the the quad at Morro Bay High School. And so I'll show you a quick shot of that, kind of what it looks like. Okay, my cursor really big, so you could see, but so this, this is just kind of a, can you guys can see my cursor, right? Can you see it or no? You can, okay. So so again, this is the Building B that I just talked about, this classroom building that's being completed right now. Student Services Building is up front, right of the campus. But this is the actual quad work that's happening. So you'll see they, this is going to be the new library as well as the activities ASB room is right here. So, you know, they're going to have really a nice access to the stage area, right in the quad. You know, places for kids to sit, lots of some new grass, greenery there. The boxes are all seat walls, so they're, they're basically planner beds, kind of like they had before, but but a little bit different in in that, you know, kind of the arrangement. We'll put tables throughout the quad. And then you can see grass area here, grass area here for kids to sit. So completely renovated, there's a huge sewer, drain pipe that goes right through this area, a lot of, you know, other infrastructure that's going to be replaced as they go through it. We had about 3.4 million in our infrastructure budget at Morro Bay High School. And in this bid for the construction comes in at 1.1. So we're definitely going to be under budget in that, which allows me to, you know, make sure that we can move those funds over to Building C and and get that completed. So the next one that is basically up for demo, which is another GMP that the board is going to see, is this building, which is Building A. This is the current theater, kitchen area, choir room, and then it was the library prior, right? When when this is done, this is going to be a new theater here, a new theater classroom for them. A lot of backstage theater here in the middle part. And then the new kitchen is 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 kind of through this area as well that ties in. And so it's a new kitchen, new serving area, and the new multipurpose room for the campus, right? And kids can go out to lunch. So the choir room stays where it's at. They actually, you know, the site, in talking with staff, requested that we keep the choir room there. They like the layout, they like the setup of the seating, the, so that'll, that'll remain the choir room. It'll just be, you know, basically renovated. So again, when these teachers move over to the B building, our hope is that we can then continue construction in the C classroom building. And eventually, as we leave, we will be doing this parking lot area out front, just restriping, re-asphalting that as we leave the campus. So again, you'll see that, right, the Building A, the Theater, Food Service, Library, Demo and Abatement coming to the board on Tuesday night. That was $627,000 as we expected, so it wasn't overbid. It was interesting, we actually had a lot more bids this time on both projects than we have in the past. In particular, that demo bid, we had bids as far as Irvine and and into the valley. So, you know, that, as we finish these last remaining projects, is critical that we get, the more bids, the better pricing we're going to see as we move forward. So that was positive. And so, like I said, the last project, you know, again, Building A Summer Theater will, completion for summer 2022, right? Starting now with the demo. And then Building C and that pool parking lot area will be the last project. Our hope would be that we start demo in the fall as those teachers move to the B building. And we can get that project up and running and, you know, by, you know, hopefully by the fall of 2022, somewhere around that area, winter 2022, we will be completed at Morro Bay High School. Any questions from the board? I'll, I'll stop there just for a minute. Any questions about Morro Bay High and projects? Okay. So we're none, we'll share Slow High, kind of the remaining projects that are there. Again, 300 Building is currently under construction up top. That's the welding wood shop and ag classrooms. They they are done with the 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 construction classrooms now, as well as the, there's a really nice computer lab for the, that area for all the classes that are there, eventually, and all the restrooms are done. They've also completed the kind of outdoor work area for Mr. Brewington's construction class, which is going to be, it just added a lot of square footage for them to work. And, you know, you don't walk up there and see an ice or wood everywhere, those types of things. So it's going to be a a nice addition. All of the buildings have one of those outdoor areas attached to them. You know, they're going quickly in the welding shop as well. You know, the, we hope to have that completed by the fall of 2022. And then eventually, once that's completed, then we will be moving into the agriculture classrooms. And that'll be the last phase of the 300 Building. When they leave, they'll do the asphalt in both areas and they're going to be taking those two really old portable classrooms out of the area. We need them now just to have classroom space at Slow High. But that will be something that, you know, kind of last phase of that project, they'll move those off the campus. The track is going to go out to bid next, actually, it might be tomorrow, I believe. And so we've been working on those docks with Ron, with Deidre Sakai, with our architect, with our project team. And so, you know, a lot of site interaction on the track project, making sure that we got all the sites, you know, needs, wants. Talk to the coaches where they want the pole vault pit and the jumping lanes and all those things. So definitely a team effort in getting those plans ready. Critical that we have great plans, because this is a design, bid, build project, right? It's, you don't have that same relationship that you have with design, build, or lease leaseback. This is, it's really important that our plans have everything included in them really upfront. And so we feel like, and from what we've heard on the street, is we're going to get a lot of people to bid that project, a lot of contractors. So very excited about that and and hope the the price, again, that we still have some positives. So just a quick look at the the track project itself. Let me, you know, one second, let me pull it up. So track project, this is the new Student Services Building. This is the front new turnaround on this side, right? So you'll, you'll enter into the track and field here. This is a new concession building with restrooms as part of it. As we come through, right, we have a new nine lane track around. The whole track had to move towards the the current, you know, home bleacher side, right, to be able to fit the nine lanes. So with that, it was actually cheaper for us to buy new visitor bleachers than it was to make the current bleachers ADA accessible. So the new visitors bleachers there, which are much smaller, right, typical visitors bleachers. But down here, you'll see we have new home bleachers as well on this track project, new shop put area here. We got pole vault on this side. You have your long jump, triple jump along the side here, new field. We have discus that can happen onto the field. And then there's also going to be a separate discus area that honestly, I think that the site and the team will want to use more often, which will be over by the gym. You know, discus is one of those kind of danger sports that if you can kind of keep that off to You know, discus is one of those kind of danger sports that if you can kind of keep that off to the side or out of the main area of a track. Meat, especially we have a large meat, right? So we'll look to set up some discus areas over on, you know, kind of over over in this area behind the the gym where the pool is. So it's it's very exciting, of course, to be able to start this project. So we'll be bidding this in the next couple of weeks and moving forward with it. Mr. Buckman.
Mark, Mark, you're muted.
See there.
Hold on.
You should see a pop up on your screen, Mark. For some reason, we can't unmute you.
Mark, if you want to type in a comment, I can read the comment. Right, a spacebar.
Nothing, nothing.
So I'll keep going. I'll look for Mark's comment. So again, right now, we're moving gangbusters through the the science end or the south portion of the 100 building, right? And so that's going to, you know, basically the the north side will move into the south side because those are the current science classrooms will move into the new science classrooms. That's why we we set it up that way. So and they're also completing the demo and starting construction in the center section of the 100 building. So I put some times on there, south section should be open by August, by the fall for our new classes, which will allow us to get started on the the northern section. My hope would be that the middle section under construction and that is on the top, the new library. It is three digital media labs. And then underneath, of course, is a huge new cafeteria, new multi, multi purpose area as well as kind of a, you know, tutoring, hangout, you know, kind of the the Cal Poly UU type of area on the bottom part of of the 100 building there. There's going to be the new elevator in the front, right, the kind of clock tower. And that that will match the Student Services Building in the front of the campus. So well, you know, as soon as we can jump into the north end, the better. As as we leave that building, we will then be finishing up the quad. We'll be doing some work in the quad throughout. And again, all of it is all new ADA accessibility. We're going to keep as much as we can in terms of that project. But, you know, as we move off, they'll they'll be kind of finishing the quad as they move off the campus. We're also starting to work out kind of in the next two years, what, you know, and when do we want to get into the 500 building classrooms and restroom there and as well as do some updating the music, the music rooms there, which was the choir and the the former band room, which will now be still a music room because the band is over in the old gym. But it'll be for the guitar classes, you know, some of those types of things. So, you know, we're we're getting to that point where, you know, kind of the budget, putting everything together from a project standpoint. And and I'm excited that over the next two years, we're going to be, you know, kind of finishing up, getting those campuses back together. And, you know, for me, honestly, for the board, I think the timing will be critical, right? So this time next year, I'll probably be coming to the board to ask about the next bond measure. And so getting most of these projects completed, you know, that the public can see, comparing it, you know, being able to kind of put some videos together. You know, my hope would be that we can start public tours. You know, let people see all the things that we were able to accomplish with Measure D will will be a great path for us as we look to, you know, really update the rest of our campuses. We have some huge needs out there. And as you walk around, as you visit sites, you'll see, right, Baywood, Bishop's Peak. You know, our two middle schools need some love. I mean, there's just lots of things that, you know, all of our safety improvements that, you know, we're going to start focusing on again, once people are back in person on campuses, all of those things are going to come forward. So we'll probably be looking at a facility master plan update this summer so that all of that information is ready for the board to to kind of see next, you know, this time next year and start to make some decisions about where we're headed in the future. So that's kind of my Catherine.
Just one quick question. I just would like to ask you to describe the architectural style of the main building at the Slow High School. Just for people who haven't seen the plans, just to ensure them that the spaceship is going to.
Yeah, so it's very, it's very much like the Student Services Building, the old gym, right? It's kind of that Spanish style look all the all the way across, right? It'll be a, you know, that that's kind of the crown jewel for that campus, right? Where Morro Bay had that beautiful J wing. You know, those industrial classes as well. Honestly, when you when you drive up Morro Bay High School and you see the new ornamental fencing and the Student Sports Services Building and the the nice beautiful grass in the front there, I mean, it's gonna, both sides are going to pop. We do have to work on the opening, the kind of entryway to Morro Bay High. We had discussions about it actually yesterday, of course, Bond and myself, we're going to meet with the city. We really need to get rid of those willow trees that there and even plant new ones along that path. But it it just needs to be cleaned up, right? You know, it's gonna, it'll truly be an eyesore of the campus is that beautiful and that's your entry point as you, you know, as you drive into campus. So those are, those are all things that will kind of finishing touches as we as we finish the sites. But but really, I mean, how this is all kind of come together from a budgetary standpoint and and really delivering on all the things that we had talked about is, you know, it's still my focus, still our goal. And, you know, it's it seems like we're going to get there, which is, which is awesome.
So I wonder if there's anybody from the public that wants to address us on this item? We'll check that out. We do, hold on.
Mr. Krill can't wait for us to get that track going. Brian.
Hey, thanks, Ryan, and I appreciate your, you know, getting input as well. I mean, it was a great process of going through and working on that. I'm wondering, even though you're bidding it out and and it's all a guesstimate at this point, do you have an idea of breaking ground and what that looks like with, you know, track happening right now and the facility being used or not used, that kind of thing?
It's going to be, I mean, there there's going to be issues, right? So the the, I would assume May, June as a start date for that with the hope that we would be have it available for the following track season.
Okay, just just as FYI, we we actually are working on a a schedule right now because it's a purple tier sport and it's going to happen, which is kind of cool. Our season is over on essentially May 29th, the end of May. So, I mean, obviously, if we can, you know, coordinate that and somehow it would be nice to be able to finish up the season.
Of course.
Okay, anyone else from the public? Thanks, Brian. Anybody else from the public? Not seeing anyone. Any any other board member comments? Well, you know, Ryan, Ron, Eric, everybody, I just, it's it's just so great to hear the progress that we're making. And the progress that we're making that seems to be on schedule and and we're meeting the budget too. You know, one of the things that has always concerned, one of the things that concerns me is when I hear school people talking about bond issues. They think they know what they're doing and they really don't and that and that gets them in trouble. It seems like we actually know what we're doing and we've been able to really to manage these projects really effectively. And and like you said, Ryan, give the give the taxpayers what they deserve and our community what it deserves. So thanks, thanks to everybody that's involved. Chris, I see Chris Bonding over there standing around.
Chris has been incredible in the process to join us. You know, one of the positive things too, I'll tell the board is with the amount of real estate and kind of values of property going up as well. The cost of Measure D is actually cheaper for people now. So that'll be something to, I think will continue to go down. So initially it was $49 per hundred thousand of assessed value was moved to $39 this year. And, you know, with everything happening in real estate right now, costs and prices, I could easily see that dropping again in the future. So, you know, just all good sales points for us in terms of wanting to approve the rest of our campuses.
So Ryan, can I ask you a question? And I don't want to like get too far afield with the board. But one of the things that I'm interested in is the the proposed battery storage at Morro Bay. Do you have any comments about that? How would that affect, how could that affect our revenues if that goes through?
I don't know yet. I'll look into it and kind of relay to the board. Eric kind of found an article about it. It's actually in the Tribune today as well. So I need to, I need to find out a little bit more in terms of like, is it part of the, is it is it a utility? Is it a business? Like, what is the, you know, how does it, how does it function, I guess? Is it, you know, is it part of like the the, you know, the unitary tax that we receive? So I'll have to dig into that with the city and kind of get some more info. I think right now it's kind of planning stages. So but hey, I mean, it can't, it it seems like a positive thing for us long term.
Yeah, and and I did share a brief information, our item in in your Friday update a while ago. The gentleman who leads the project proposal has offered to come and speak to the board about what it is. And and so I've just been waiting until it it becomes more more well defined, I think. And so perhaps at our next board study session, I could ask if they could come out and present the concept, the idea. It's it's stated or 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 its design is to be the largest battery powered sort of
Storage facility.
Storage facility in the state of California. And and so it's it's a pretty, it may even be the nation, but it's a pretty amazing situation. If if the the city of Morro Bay and this company, Vistra, if they can pull it off, it will have definite positive ramifications for our county, for our school district. And and so I'll invite him to see if he'll be willing to come out to present to the board in our Mark's study session. Great. Anything else from the board? Well, thank you very much, Dr. Prater. Our next meeting is next Tuesday night, the 16th. And did we, did we want to talk about pushing the start of open session up a little bit earlier and close session up earlier as well? Yeah, if it's okay with the board, I I suspect there will be quite a quite a public comment section at our next board meeting. So if it's okay, I'd like to start the open session at five instead of six. And we could do our closed session at four instead of five. Is everybody okay? Thumbs up if you are. First, head nod. Looks like everybody's good with that. Okay. So thank you all. We'll see you next Tuesday, the 16th at 4:00 PM. Thanks again, everybody. Really appreciate all your work.